Good evening. We are here for a workshop tonight, but we're actually going to start off with a very important recognition. We're going to recognize the longest-employed person in the city of Lewiston, and we believe in the history of the city of Lewiston. Fifty years strong, so I'm going to let Dave Jones talk for a minute or so, or 15 seconds or less, about Mr. Mike Danforth, and we'll give him a plaque and send him to the back room for his roast. I mean, goodbye. Mr. Jones?
Actually, you said you were going to be doing your thing first, but that's okay. Mike's been with us a lot longer than I've been around, so he started with us 50 years ago, has had all kinds of different responsibilities as he's gone through the years and stuff. This last year has been a little tough on his health, but he's always been there and available to us, and we've been very happy to have Mike, brother, as most of us call him, working with us and stuff, and he's known and loved by people not only in the department, but throughout the whole city and stuff. So congratulations to you, Mike. Well deserved on your retirement. We appreciate it. You've never been at a loss for words. Come on up.
All right. Are you heading out back, Dave? You're heading out back?
Move up.
Oh. All right. Take all the time you need.
Well, 50 years. I'd just like to say Mayor Bouchard, councilors, Mr. Barrett, you know, and Dave, you know, I am lost. Everybody says I've never lost for words. Well, tonight I am. It's a big night. I mean, I've been thinking about this all day, Jim. But I just wanted, you know, I started my career at Public Works. My first director was Bill Adams, and my last director will be Dave Jones. And that's about six Public Works directors that went through, you know, and probably six or seven mayors and councilors. I can't count you all, but, you know. But, you know, I was 18, and I'm 68 now, so a little bit gray. I had long hair down here then when I started, and...
We still need a haircut.
But, you know, when I drove in that yacht at 18, I never thought I'd be here that long, but it was an amazing career, you know, and I was blessed by having great friends. All these guys here, we all grew up together. We, you know, it was just a fantastic career, you know. Not only them, but then I made, I was a courier for a while at City Hall. I made a lot of fantastic friends here in this building, and everybody treated me with open arms and, you know, I don't know where to, you know, go, but I want to thank you all for everything, and, you know, it was a great career. Thank you all.
Now you've got to stay for the whole meeting, Mike.
It's a great turnout for a workshop.
Congratulations.
Incredible. Yeah. There is a video back there for those that are here for Mike that I was being on display from Phil Nato, a little tribute to Mike, so if you guys want to go back there.
It's an impression.
There you go. Yeah, there you go. So, if you want to be in the back, executive sculpture film, all set up. Can I get the door back there? Hey, Dave? Oh, it's open. It's open. Okay. They're getting in there. They had it all set up, I believe.
They had the light on.
Let it clear out a minute, Erin.
We'll give you a standing ovation.
Yeah.
I thought they were all here for me, and then I realized not.
Dennis, are those Dave's cards?
Oh, yeah.
Dave's or yours?
These are mine and...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. The whole Public Works Department has left, back to our regularly scheduled program. And that is going to start out with an update from Erin Gay from the Public Health Committee. I will note, I know there's not a lot of people here, but this is a workshop, and typically we do not do public comments at a workshop, and with so many items and a couple of them that could draw some attention, we will not be doing any public comment tonight. However, the cards in front of Deputy Dotay are there. If anyone has anything they would like to send in to us by email, and we can review those. Nothing is being decided tonight, no decisions made, votes taken, so purely informational for the council. So with that, well, yours, Erin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bouchard and members of the City Council. That's a really tough act to follow, but I will do my best. My name's Erin Gay. I live at 115 Old Green Road here in Lewiston. I'm also a public health professional that works here in town, and I am the vice chair of the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee. So I'm here to provide a brief description about what the committee does, and then talk about some recent successes, and hopefully at the end have a little bit of an offer for some help to all of you. So a little bit of background, the L.A. Public Health Committee started as an inter-local agreement between both Lewiston and Auburn back in 2008. One of the reasons that the committee was started is that there actually aren't municipal health departments here in Lewiston, Auburn. Just for a little bit of context, 47 states have interconnected public health departments, typically along county lines, but in Maine, we like to be different. So we have a state health department in Augusta, and there are municipal health departments in Portland and Bangor, and Lewiston, Auburn hasn't had one for a long time. The original mission of the committee was to create public health partnerships that promote physical and mental health and prevent disease, injury, and disability. But then in 2016, we decided to shake things up a little bit, and the committee's role was redefined to focus on public health policy rather simply on partnerships. So our revised mission is to advise municipal elected officials on policies related to the community's public health. At about that same time, the formal affiliation with Auburn was dropped, so we became the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee because we liked the acronym and we didn't want to change it. The committee received some minor staff support through Dottie Paramoodyer and Dennis Dotoy, but we don't receive any financial resources. We have nine members, and I think you have the membership in front of you. It includes City Councilor Cludier. Ronnie Parity is our chair and representative from the school committee, or appointed by the school committee, and we have representation from Andersgagen Home Care and Hospice, St. Mary's, New Mayors Public Health Initiative, Bates College, Healthy Andersgagen. So to get to some of our successes, one of the things that we supported was St. Mary's Tobacco-Free Campus Initiative, which you may remember from some months ago. They wanted to go tobacco-free to protect patients and visitors from secondhand and thirdhand smoke, but Campus Avenue runs right through their campus. So we supported their presentation to the City Council to make that a tobacco-free area. We've also been providing some focus to substance misuse because we know it's such a big issue for our community. We recommended that the Lewiston PD actually host a medicine disposal box, so we have those throughout the county, but Lewiston has been one spot where people aren't served by having a place they can take their unused or expired meds so that they're not abused. So we worked with the PD and Dennis Dotoy, and we were able to get a permanent disposal box there. And according to Sergeant Randy St. Laurent, since June, we've collected approximately 150 pounds of medicines, so that's a great service to our community. And then most recently, the L.A. Public Health Committee sought to improve our local housing stock, and we worked, we created a committee to work on the rental registration program that was presented to you a few months back, and that has since led to a mayor-appointed committee to work on that same issue after some feedback from all of you. Our group also remains connected to other public health efforts. I believe you've recently heard from Catherine Ryder from Tri-County Mental Health Services and the community MAT steering committee, it's called. We hear presentations from that group and stay connected so that we can support their efforts, and we're also connected to the Healthy Neighborhood Planning Council, which is focused on improving the housing stock in downtown Lewiston. So we work together to sort of inform each other's policy. So what can we do for you all? What we can do is, we are volunteers at your disposal. If public health-related issues come before you, we have some expertise that we can lend. We can do a little bit of research. We can talk to you about best practices, and we would love to hear whatever your questions are about public health. And then we're a proactive group, so we'll probably proactively bring you some policy ideas as well, if that works for the council. So that's all that I had to present, but I'm open to taking any questions that you have about our committee.
Council Cludier.
So, thanks, Erin. At our last meeting, Ed and Dennis may have talked to you about this already, we had talked about how as things, as your sort of presented items to include on workshop agendas, if they're public health-related, to let the Public Health Committee know that they're on there, because I think sometimes things are presented to you, and then nobody really kind of thinks to include the different committees. So if we could just sort of have a heads-up on those kinds of things, and then just sort of thinking about those things in terms of whether there's research that needs to be done associated with them. So like tonight, we're talking about marijuana, and there may be pieces of that that we need research done on that either the Public Health Committee could do or that we could enlist students to do.
Council Markham.
Yes, there was an impressive lineup of topics, but I didn't hear lead. Maybe it's buried in one of the six topics you mentioned.
Well, lead is a housing issue, so I think the rental registration work that we've done speaks to lead in part, and as well as other, yeah.
But you're kind of, you're being modest, because since I've been on the council and on the Public Health Committee, lead has been like the focus of our work predominantly, I would say.
We do talk a lot about lead. It's an important issue for our community. Sorry.
Council Lysen.
Thank you. Ed, I've got a question for you. Erin mentioned Catherine Ryder, and we're going to try and get her before the council in a workshop.
She will be here on the 6th, 13th.
13th of November?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Erin? You get off easy tonight. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Erin.
Don't look back, whatever you do.
Okay, and we are now getting a presentation, Community Concepts Workforce Development Plan. I know we have Ms. Dee Parker.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Ms. Dee Parker, Economic Development Manager. I am here with Joy Gould, who is the Workforce Project Director with Community Concepts. Community Concepts has approached the city to seek support for a funding opportunity through the J.P. Morgan Chase's Advancing Cities Challenge to help expand their current workforce initiative here in Lewiston. The Lewiston Workforce Initiative was born from a pilot program funded by the John T. Gorman Foundation to the city of Lewiston to bring together traditional workforce partners as well as community-based organizations to develop a new approach to reaching some of our residents that have not been successful in obtaining careers or jobs with economic mobility. And so the program was designed to do this new approach to job training, overcome barriers preventing residents from being successful in employment or training programs, to supply a pipeline of ready-to-work entry-level workers to the local construction field, as well as improve housing conditions in the downtown area. The initial pilot program was focused specifically on construction because of those needs, and especially with our contractors. It aligns very well with some of the challenges in our downtown neighborhoods. As Erin had mentioned in the previous workshop session, that housing conditions remain a big challenge. The Lewiston Workforce Initiative was seen as an important effort through the city because it aligns with our legacy Lewiston goals, to partner and create skilled labor education plan that will in turn create programs to ensure skilled labor force here in Lewiston for future businesses. And it further aligns with our choice neighborhood planning work that's happening right now, focused on the Tree Street neighborhood, by developing opportunities for improved housing in the neighborhood, as well as providing access to careers with economic mobility for downtown residents. The construction training program has been successful. Our pilot program has had 15 participants complete the training. 14 were directly hired from the program, and after over a year, year and a half, 11 remain employed with the same employers today. The average starting wage for those that were hired through this program was $1,275 per hour, and today, the average wage of participants who have been employed over one year is about $1,606 per hour. Our employers remain at the table and are very excited to see this scaled up. We have, now that it's beyond just a pilot program and looking to evolve, Community Concepts has become the home of this program, and we're still working with many of the partners that we have through the design of it. And so with this Advancing Cities Challenge, there's huge opportunity to not only expand the work being done through this training program, but also provide some opportunities to further our choice neighborhood work, as well as some opportunities for supporting existing employers with some challenges that they're facing with workforce today. So I'm going to ask Joy to really share what they hope to do with this opportunity and what it means for the city.
Great, thank you, Misty. So I'm Joy Gould with Community Concepts, your neighbor just across the park there. This is a $3 million, three-year grant opportunity through J.P. Morgan Chase, and it would allow us to take the successful training program model and really bring it up to scale. In addition to looking at the building trades component, we would also be layering on healthcare sector. Healthcare is our largest employer in the city, and it would allow us, in partnership with Lewiston Adult Education, to bring on two full-time staff so that we would have a year-round, consistent faculty committed to this project, one being in the construction trades and the other being in the healthcare sector. Our target outcomes for this would be to train 60 people a year, either in healthcare or in construction. And in addition to that, looking at the retention, a lot of the individuals that we're working with, I'm sure you know, have multiple barriers to employment, so we would be looking at the workforce stability project. Some of you are a little familiar with the Bridges Out of Poverty model, but layering that on top of this work with our employer partners, and so bringing on two full-time workforce stability coaches who will work with the individuals on the frontline staff. That will create an additional 150 participants served through job retention strategies, and also looking at individuals getting career counseling and resume work and the work that tees them up to work successfully with our partners, with the Career Center and Western Main Community Action and the other partners of the design team, the Lewiston Adult Education Program. So this is something that J.P. Morgan Chase, they've specifically titled it Advancing Cities Challenge. As the funder, they are looking for a nonprofit to apply for this funding, but it has to be in partnership with the city. And so we have had some really fantastic conversations with economic development. I appreciate that very much, Misty, and also with general assistance, all really positive ways to look at how we can align resources and look at different policy that will help remove some of the barriers to employment that some of our low-income residents are facing.
And so really, what we're here tonight about is to present what this opportunity looks like and how it really is an advancement of a lot of the efforts that are already happening in the community, and for council support. And when you hear that, it probably sounds like a loaded question of what does this really require from us? And really, for this opportunity, it's looking for a letter of support from the council in agreement that it does align with what the work is that's happening here and that the city is supportive of CCI pursuing this opportunity and this work, as well as a commitment to exploring some policy changes that could happen to help advance this work as well. And at this level, you know, we're not in a position to identify specific policies that we're willing to commit to changing, but things like, you know, with our rehab work that is happening in the downtown neighborhoods, are there opportunities to ensure that some of the training participants are playing an active role in that? Is there assistance with aligning with GA and some of their work that we do to better serve some of the applicants that are coming into that office and helping them access additional employment resources and things like that? And so that's what we are hoping the city will support to explore through this opportunity.
Okay. Turn it loose to the council. Council Ray.
So I heard you mention Lewiston Adult Education. What's the role there?
So currently, Lewiston Adult Education is the training partner for the construction program that is already running, and they also do have occasionally run different health sector training programs, CNA being one of them. They're a partner on our design team already, and in conversations with Bill Grant, who is the director, you know, we were looking at how can we really have a major impact with this opportunity this grant provides? And so we would look to Lewiston Adult Education to have full-time staff. Right now, their adult education faculty tend to be kind of part-time, you know, project-based, but really, to have the impact that we want to have, he would want to have staff directly focused on this project year-round so that we could run multiple training cohorts throughout the year.
And the funding for that would come through this grant?
Through this grant.
Okay.
Yes.
To the school department?
Yes, yes. The Lewiston Adult Education budget is, for those two positions, are built into the grant for J.P. Morgan Chase.
Okay, great. Overall, my first impressions are that it sounds like a really great idea, and I know there's a lot of need for it, especially so as a school committee representative, knowing adult education has these needs and fills that CNA class so often. We also heard from the Regional Technical Center last night about building a satellite location in Auburn, so there's really a need for that sort of technical and trade work in Lewiston and Auburn area. So it sounds really great to me, and you've shown success through the pilot program, so thank you so much for the work.
Council Cludier.
So I'm also really excited about this. As you know, Misty, I was really supportive of the pilot program and have had a lot of conversations with Bill Grant about his support for it as well. I'm really glad to see the pilot program was so successful, and I'm fully on board, so...
Council Bem.
I'm also excited about this program, so I'm all for it. But I know that, being on the grant committee, I know that there are several organizations that do workforce development, and is your plan to work with all of these people so that there won't be too much of an overlap?
Right. So we have, the existing design team incorporates the Lewiston Career Center, Western Main Community Action, Community Concepts. It's a big design team. Misty is part of the design team. Bill is part of the design team. They will continue on as partners. Some of the funding that currently funds this project has been a bit tenuous in the last year, and so this would be looking at a way to fund this fully for three years out of foundation funding, leveraging resources wherever possible, and certainly, we will keep those partnerships in place, and we work very closely with the Career Center. They will still remain a partner. So it wouldn't... Does that answer your question?
Yeah, somewhat. I can't name all the groups that have come to us to ask for money for training people. Misty, you're probably more familiar with them. But it would be nice if we knew that there would be coordination between all the groups because...
Are you talking about CDBG? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. And it's grant money, and so it'd be nice to be able to use it to its fullest extent and not do it to...
Yeah, many of the partners in the community that are doing specific workforce development that is in line with this type of workforce training, we're already partnering with. And actually, people like Take Two Youth Build through Goodwill, they're one of the newest partners to the design team because of that exact same reason, that they're doing parallel efforts. How do we continue this work and sort of elevate it together as opposed to trying to do it in silos?
Great, great. That sounds wonderful. There was one other thing I was thinking, too, when, as Council Ray mentioned, the schools. I know I'm also on the Public Works Committee, and we have some contractors who are sitting on the committee, and one of the things they say often is that they don't feel as though the children get enough, or young men or women get enough training, and they'd love to have an apprentice program...
Yes.
...available to high school students. Not only, not only do they need the training, which the school can't provide right there on premises, but just if they had, if you could coordinate an apprentice program with some of the contractors, and I'll give you the name of the person so that maybe he can facilitate that, but also, I had another thought, but that's right. But something like that, I know there's a need for that.
Yes.
Yes, that's right. They need people, they have trouble finding employees to do everything that they need done, and so it's not mainly for that, though, because it feels as though if there could be a little apprentice program going, that students could come to them after they graduate looking for a job, kind of already trained. So, a thought.
St. Mary's does have an apprenticeship program that they've already worked out with the medical assistant training, and so looking at that and certainly layering over, this work is really targeted to getting people the initial baseline skill set, but we have been looking at ways to bring on the trades and a formal apprenticeship program. It's not in the grant application per se, but it's definitely something that is in the forefront of our minds.
Council Lysen.
Thank you, Mayor. Great idea. I'll pass on someone who, every time I ask, what are your three most important things, they go, jobs, jobs, jobs. So it's a focus here. It actually addresses the financial security issues as well as community revitalization when people can work, and there are a lot of people in this community that want to work. One suggested on the construction, it may not be part of this application, but like you said, as you look, a person much smarter than me suggested this, and it's happened to me, my wife, but a long time ago, why aren't we training people to do some of the redevelopment work, like on our mills, which is pretty specialized? And we have to hire people from Massachusetts at high rates of money to get this work done. So if we could train people to do that, because it's, you know, it's, there's niches. For example, a lot of the paint's removed with walnut shells, you know what I mean? So it doesn't mar the wood and stuff. So there's all of these processes that I think we could train people to do, and it's part of the construction, you know, part, but I'd suggest maybe exploring that a little bit, saying, what, where are we going to go? I mean, we, I don't know what the amount of mill space. I mean, Lincoln or David, you know, Lincoln? Do you know, you know what the kind of mill space is left undeveloped here in Lewiston? How much mill space is left undeveloped here in Lewiston? Just approximation, I'm just saying, there's quite a bit, I know.
There is quite a bit.
Do you know, you know what the kind of mill space is left undeveloped here in Lewiston? How much mill space is left undeveloped here in Lewiston? Just approximation, I'm just saying there's quite a bit, I know.
There is quite a bit. It depends on which mill you want to talk about. The cotton mill is 560,000, the hill mill's about 400,000, there's about 180, 200.
That's over a million square feet there.
Yeah, yeah, we got over a million square feet.
Yeah, so there's an opportunity there, I think, to kind of train people with some specialized construction techniques. And some of it's painting, some of it's, like I said, removal of, you know, keeping the natural parts of the mill, you know, because it's, the bones are great, as people have said, so. And good luck in your work.
Ed?
What's your schedule and when do you need something from us by?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible. What I'm going to see.
Resolution or something? Would it be a resolution?
It's just a.
Well, the difficulty is that the next, we don't have a whole lot of meetings until the, not meeting until the 20th in a formal session. So what I might suggest is that we can draft up a letter and ask you folks when you get a chance to come by and sign it and then we can provide that.
Sounds good. Excellent.
That would be perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are you choking?
She's so emotional.
Okay, item number four, this is going to be Ed.
Yeah. David and I.
Oh, and David.
Oh, the Ed and Dave Show.
We have heard some concerns from members of the council as well as from members of the public about what seems to be a growing proliferation of temporary signs in the right-of-way coming up on the, on the current election season or in the middle of the current election season. And some questions have come up during that process about the extent to which the city can regulate or control the placement of those signs. So included in a memo to you is the language of our current ordinance. Our current ordinance is basically unconstitutional and unenforceable, so we haven't been enforcing it. And it's unconstitutional because it's not content neutral. It basically starts by talking specifically about political signs. As soon as you control signs based on content, you run into a First Amendment problem. And there was a court case a couple of years ago, it basically threw out virtually every temporary sign ordinance in the, almost every sign ordinance in the country. So what we've been doing instead is pretty much following the state law. State law allows temporary signs placed within the public right-of-way at any, at any time for a maximum of 12 weeks during calendar year. It used to be six weeks and they doubled it because we have primaries in general elections in some years, so they wanted to make sure that people had enough time to cover both. Theoretically, a temporary sign cannot be placed within 30 feet of another temporary sign bearing the same message, must not be larger than four feet by eight feet in size, has to be labeled with the name and address of the individual entity that placed the sign and the date that the sign was placed. So anyway, that's the state law, that's pretty much what we've been trying to follow. Councilor Markcott asked back a couple of meetings ago about whether we can prohibit signs in the right-of-way adjacent to city property. And basically talking with the city attorney, he indicated that we probably cannot because that again is public property, it's part of the right-of-way. Much of public property is traditionally seen as a public forum, so while we can prohibit the signs on our property, so we can say you can't have them on a park, you can't have them on school property, we probably cannot prohibit them on the right-of-way adjacent to those properties. We do however have some options that we want to consider. One is we could basically get rid of our current law and adopt the state law as a local ordinance or something very similar to it, which gives us clear authority in our ordinances to enforce it. We do have authority under the state law to enforce it, but it never hurts to have authority in our own ordinances. We could ban all temporary signs. There is some risk to that, that that may be questioned by some as going too far and beyond what we can justify. The city at one point did not allow political, temporary signs in the right-of-way, then started to allow them. And I think what we've seen, we started allowing what, about 10, 12 years ago?
Prohibiting them?
Allowing them.
Allowing them, yeah.
And it seems since then we've seen more and more, almost every election cycle, started off slow and it just keeps, seems to be keep growing. So we can probably adopt an ordinance that would prohibit temporary signs in the right-of-way. That has some implications to it. For example, it would also prohibit the Shriners from advertising their circus, it would prohibit the A-frame signs that we have in the right-of-way, although one of them on Main Street is actually on private property, actually city-owned property next to Mill 5. But in the right-of-way, we would eliminate those signs as well. And then we could also write a stricter set of regulations. We could require the signs to be smaller, require them to be farther apart, limit the time more, to a shorter period. The difficulty with stricter regulation is that everybody's, not all campaigns are local and a lot of the statewide campaigns know what the state's rules are and that's pretty much what they follow, so you'd have probably some enforcement efforts. But that's generally the concern, the concern is the proliferation. It's not so much a problem this time of year, but it can be a real problem if those signs are up in primary season when we're trying to mow, for example, public properties and rights-of-way. Those signs are in the way and can create problems. It can also, as you all know, create hazards at intersections. We can address those when we're aware of them, but we don't often know that until somebody complains. But theoretically, you could put up an eight-foot-high and four-foot-wide sign at an intersection under state law, we'd have to go out and take it down because it would be blocking vision. So those are the options we could come up with. Wanted to bring it forward to your attention, see if you wanted to have us take anything further on this and obviously not in time for this election season.
So personally, I'd like to see elimination of all the temporary signs. I think we're, it's a little bit of a downfall to some of the organizations like the Shriners or the Greek Festival that put signs up, but I think it forces them to get creative, maybe partner with some businesses or homeowners, because we can't restrict those signs. Possibly for some of our events, partner with the city and do something on city property rather than a public right-of-way. I think they're an eyesore. I hate putting them out, I hate spending the money, I never get them all back. Some, it's going to snow and we're going to lose them and they're just, you know, we're still finding signs from two election cycles ago in the bushes. It's, it's an eyesore and I would love to get rid of all of them.
Councilwoman Ray.
I had a question and I'm not sure if this is like top of mind for you, but aren't there certain rules about pertaining to political signs after the election needing to be collected within a certain amount of time? Could you enumerate what that is? If you know it at this moment, sorry.
No, there isn't anymore. It used to be, that used to be like, you could put them out, I think it was six to eight weeks before the, the primary, before the election, and they had to remove so many days afterwards. But with the new state law change that basically says that these are no longer political signs, they're just, you know, what's the word?
Temporary signs.
Temporary signs. Theoretically, you can have, you know, a political sign up in the middle of February.
But it's limited to a certain number of weeks per year.
That's right.
So you get like 12 weeks a year, you can put up whatever 12 weeks you want, but you can't go beyond that 12th week.
The consequence for not doing this appropriately? Is there a consequence? Like, there's no teeth, it feels like.
There's state fines.
There's state fines? Okay, and then?
I don't think we do many.
The other question is.
If we had a local, if we were enforcing it under our local ordinance, we could have local fines.
Okay, and the second or third question, I guess, is, is there also a clause about being like so many feet away from each other? I should know this, having done it, but 30 feet and.
Similar, so if you're putting up, if somebody's putting up campaign sign that says Vote for Joe Smith, there has to be 30 feet between that sign and the next sign that says Vote for Joe Smith. However, in between that 30, in that 30 feet, you could have 30 other candidates with signs in every foot.
Right. Okay. My overall impression is this election feels particularly bad with some candidates who seem really bent on littering the whole city, state.
And I can pretty much guarantee you there are signs for the same candidates. In fact, I was looking around today, driving around, there was one candidate sign, they couldn't have been much more than 10 feet apart.
Oh, yeah, especially down Lisbon Street where people put them at every tree, so.
And it's difficult to enforce.
Yeah, I think whatever is going to be easiest to enforce for you folks and also protects people's constitutional rights would be great. Just my plug for that.
That would be good.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, so my only concern is for like the Farwell Pumpkin Festival and their signage and things like the Greek Festival and their signage and, you know, I think we can say, oh yeah, you know, it forces them to be creative and they can put their signs on private property as well. And I agree with that, but I also recognize that the number of volunteers they have to help with those events are becoming fewer and farther between. And so it feels a little bit like pulling out a rug out from underneath them. That being said, I also agree that the number of political signs are out of control.
So if we were to do this and ban it, that's right-of-way, so Farwell could still continue to, you know, the school department could still put signs out for their pumpkin festival or any of their festivals.
On the school property.
On school property, okay. It just wouldn't be in public right-of-ways we could do it, okay.
Councilwoman Beam.
And I'm also wondering on that point, or to that point, maybe the city, maybe we could put up banners for some of these school facilities and it's always, it's cute to see a banner over the street.
That immediately runs in, it's all or nothing.
Okay, so that's the same thing as the right-of-way.
Signage, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay, I just, I just had that thought, but I agree actually that it's really getting bad and I think it starts way too early. Maybe 12 weeks, I think is too long, but if it's the state regulations, why redo it? But I know when I ran in the 1990s, we couldn't put up, well, we could, but the general thinking was don't do it till after Halloween. And so that's what, one week. And it was a lot less, you needed fewer signs, it was less obtrusive. Do you remember Dr. like Councilor Joy? Were you running in the 1990s? Oh, now we know who's the old one here. But, yeah, so I think if we could limit the amount of time that the signs are up, I'm all for getting rid of them also in the right-of-ways. I think it's a good idea and it would save candidates a lot of money and everybody be on the same playing field. Nobody would have signs up, so it's not like it would hurt anybody, yeah.
Councilman Markott.
This all started with particularly gateway locations, like the Southern Gateway was the example that was used. We can also think of plenty of other places like on Main Street. And if elimination of temporary signs altogether is the only way we can go about it, I'd support it. If there are other creative ways to take care of those gateways, then I'd support that if there's some apprehension with regards to eliminating it altogether. Some other creative ways, maybe if we were to pave over and paint it green in some of the places like it already is, in these areas that have grass, that would probably eliminate everybody from using that platform. And then we can put up the A-frame sign. Now, what are they going to do, attach to that sign? They probably aren't allowed to do that. And, and other signs that could be, that we would want to have allowed with the elimination of the temporary signs is to make something more permanent. So if we're talking about one of those A-frame signs for a blood drive and it's 13 weeks, that would be considered permanent, correct? So we make sure that we put it up for 13 weeks.
Except our ordinance prohibits off-premise signs?
Well, yeah, there's a, and I would need to do a little more research on it, but there's an underlying state rule with respect to off-premise advertising, that's why you don't see billboards in the state. So we need to be conscious about that too here. What we're talking about tonight is temporary signs, it was really geared towards political signs, but now it's all kinds of signs, right? So there's a reason why you don't see a fast food sign 15 miles away from its location in Maine. And we just need to be mindful that if all of a sudden it's like, oh, McDonald's approaches the mayor and says, I'm going to put a sign in front of your house now. That's, that's, obviously not that's what we're talking about tonight, but we just need to be conscious about that too.
So that permanent sign idea would turn into a billboard sign issue?
I don't know if it's a billboard sign issue, but you can't have off-premise advertising in the state of Maine, period. That's why you see all those official business directional signs, those like, you know, rectangle signs on the right-of-way and those are bought by those businesses and installed by DOT. That was kind of one of the reasons those signs actually came about.
When you say off-premise, you're referring to businesses in particular?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I had a question about what is the right-of-way? How is it defined? What is the distance?
Depends on the street. Normally in most developed parts of the city would be pretty much from the edge of one, the back edge of one sidewalk to the back edge of the sidewalk on the other side of the street, but it's going to vary depending on where you are.
Because I always thought it was a certain distance from the center line.
It's measured from the center line, but the right-of-way can vary anywhere from, what's our smallest, probably a 20-foot right-of-way some places?
30, 40, 50.
Up to 100.
Yeah. The issue we're going to have, because honestly I feel this discussion comes up depending upon like the politics of that year or something like that, because we've gone from strict to less strict and now we're going to strict again. With respect to the right-of-way, we used to not allow signs in the right-of-way. So, you know, we're yanking signs that are clearly in the right-of-way and then it becomes a debate with the candidate as to, well, where is the property line? And I'm, I'm not going to have our staff or Public Works debate where a property line is because we're not surveyors. I mean, when it's obvious, it's obvious and when it isn't, you know, it's not worth the battle type thing. So that may come up as a result of this. When you have an esplanade and it's on Main Street and it's pavement, green space and a sidewalk and it's in that green space, clearly that's in the right-of-way. It's in front of somebody's house, I'm not sure that we're going to get too excited about if it's in the right-of-way or not unless it's, you know, it's really obvious. Because again, we don't know where the property line is. I'm not going to start surveying just for signs.
But I just heard that it could be from the back of the sidewalk from one side of the street to the other side.
In some places.
And if it's another two feet, then it could be an argument with the property owner.
Absolutely.
Property owners have pulled up signs in the past and are claiming it was their property, sometimes correctly, sometimes incorrectly.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor. Can I just offer one clarification here too? It is, right-of-ways are not necessarily measured from the center line of the road. The road is somewhere within that right-of-way and that right-of-way could be anywhere, I think we have one that's around 15 feet wide, all the way up to 100 and some feet wide and stuff. So the roads sometimes meander within the right-of-way, so you're not going to necessarily be exactly, center line of the road is the center of the right-of-way and stuff, so.
So what defines the right-of-way? Is it?
There is, there is a legal description where the property pins and stuff and they can, we can actually locate them, but it takes some work in order to do that.
Because, like the city park right across the street, there's probably a right-of-way along Park Street, but at some point you're in the city park.
And I can tell you, you know, for example, I think, I think Park Street may be 60-foot wide right-of-way there. I'm just guessing off the top of my head here and stuff. And that, that roadway may or may not be dead center of the right-of-way.
Roads tend to, at least some roads tend to move periodically.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm against a total prohibition. I do think we, we need to become consistent with the state law so that people aren't confused. And there was even a change in the state law recently, right? You mentioned. And that affected, you know, people putting signs up for both, both elections, the primary and whatever. Also, I mentioned a park that's, didn't know it was a park, it was College, Montello, what's the other side street?
Fair.
Fair Street, thank you. So I remember putting signs up there in a couple of campaigns and then all of a sudden they're confiscated by the city. Now, were they right-of-way, were they, and that was classified as a park. So, and we had to come and reclaim the signs, so.
There was, there was a period of time where, as Councilor Markott. There was, there was a period of time where, as Councilor Markot noted, we did not permit signs to be posted in the right of way adjacent to city property.
So that's, so the reason.
That one wiped out the whole, that whole triangle.
I mean, the reason why I'd like to see consistency, so everyone knows what the rules are. Because this year it's like all these signs are put up in that area, we're going like, what's going on? This is, was, we weren't able to do that. And then we had to take signs down after the primary to observe the six-month rule. And then finding out that it's really twelve, twelve weeks, not, not twelve months, but twelve weeks. So to me, I'd like to see some consistency with the state law, if we have to follow that as well anyway, so that there is clear, and the thirty-foot rule, quite frankly, is not being observed. And it is, and I, I know you can't write too many regulations, but what I like is when someone comes in, you have, you have your sign out, someone puts one right in front of your sign. I mean, it's like, what are you thinking, you know? There's all of this right of way to work with and people still, you know, are really, I think, obstructing other people's stuff. So I don't know if that can be factored in too, but to totally prohibit, I think that's throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I think we can do better. I think we can be consistent and we can allow it to happen. I think it's a, I think a, a speech issue to a certain extent, so, thank you.
I'd suggest to the council that between planning and code enforcement and Public Works, when we, when we did have the ordinance where it said you couldn't put a sign in front of a city-owned property, the, a park, a parking garage, a school or whatever, between, you know, our office and Public Works, they were great as far as if you saw it, pull it out type thing. I am not excited about you folks asking us to measure the distances between signs by me not putting my sign right in front of council license, even though that's not nice, mean, I don't wanna do that. Political signs are a, a pain. So I would just suggest that whatever you folks decide to go with, take into consideration both, you know, departments' ability to enforce it and the time involved with it. And likewise, if there is a way, and I don't know that there is, but, you know, somebody puts up the yard sale sign, well, first of all, our department's not working on the weekend. I can't imagine the chief telling his officers to yank out a yard sale sign on a Saturday morning. That seems like a reasonable thing to do, even though it's not allowed. Just things to think about.
David, what would be the easiest for you to enforce?
Just strictly prohibitive.
Well, you, you either strictly prohibit it and that's gonna be a learning curve every single primary and election, especially when it's out of town and, and, and not local issues.
I mean, I feel like even prohibiting it is creating work for you because.
It is. So just to whoever made that comment, just follow the state rules, quite frankly. I mean, and we respond accordingly.
I would make one addition to the state rule and that is I would, I would limit the size further. Four feet by eight feet is way too big for any right of way in the city of Lewiston.
So can you give us recommendations for that?
Yeah.
What was, sorry, what?
Regulations for the size.
What would be a good size? Yes.
If we don't prohibit, then do it. Yeah? That's great.
You know, because if, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guarantee when we go out and take down a sign, like we got the complaint about one sign at, at Canal in Lisbon, it was blocking visibility. And it was a sign that was too large, shouldn't been there, it was just way too big and blocking visibility.
Would that affect the A-frame? If, if we do that?
It potentially could.
Yeah.
Although we could, there's probably ways I could get around that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay.
It could be a limitation on size near an intersection.
Yeah.
I simply wanna see the signs disappear from our gateways.
We'll see what we can.
Because that's the first impression people get of some of our interesting neighborhoods in the downtown district.
Especially those ones around Webster Street and I'm for it. How do people put them there?
Where on Webster?
Uh, when you come off the highway.
Alfred Lloyd.
It's like the most important place.
That is.
It's like the most important place.
It's the best place.
I'm afraid.
What's scary about it?
How do you walk there?
Oh, you go there in the middle of the night.
Okay.
Hey, Kay.
Kinda all over the place, but we can.
Can you help?
Yeah.
My baby ending up.
We can massage something out of that, right?
Let's talk about weeds up here.
Yeah, right.
Yes, it's now time to talk about the other weed ordinance.
All right.
Actual weeds.
Actual weeds.
Actual weeds. This is basically our no plant growth over twelve inches in certain parts of the community based on zoning. Right now, that ordinance covers, there's a map included in your, in your document, mostly residential areas in the downtown district. And even there, you end up with strange things like, what is it, Pine Street maybe and some of the other streets that have commercial zoning or mixed zoning along the, the border, which means you've got a stripe down the, through an area of areas where you can't enforce the, where we keep, where we don't enforce the weed ordinance and a lot next door we do. And then we've had other complaints from residents in other parts of town about high growth around properties. Primarily, I think those have come from unoccupied properties, but I suspect some have also come from occupied properties. So the question, you know, the question is whether we want to consider exo, consider expanding the area covered by our weed ordinance. And if so, if we wanna do that to both occupied and vacant properties.
So I guess I'll start on this one too.
I know where you stand.
You know where I stand. That's weird. Yes, let's extend this to the entire city as concern in a lot of neighborhoods, especially where there are abandoned properties, like you said, but also sometimes where there are occupied properties that aren't being maintained. I just got a letter from the town of Rumford, because I own a home there, they just passed an ordinance that is citywide for maintenance standards for their properties. I think it makes sense. I actually talked to the code enforcement officer today and he said that they have no problem enforcing it either, as of yet, six months in. So, Councilor LaJoy.
Yes, and to tag on to that, Mr. Mayor, in my district, I've had a few complaints of rentals. They're not private homes anymore, but they're single home rentals. And come to find out, they're not taking care of the property. There's debris all over the property as well as the grass hasn't been cut and or trimmed. So it's a nice war for the whole community.
Yeah, debris is already covered, so we can take care of that. So if you get complaints about, you know, junk in people's yards, we can enforce that right now. One caution I'll, I'll throw up here is that, given everything else that code does, this will pretty much be an on complaint response. So we're not gonna go out and, you know, drive around the city looking for people with high, with our ruler and measuring the grass to write people up for citations.
While you're out doing the sign patrol.
Exactly.
Right. And the other thing is, is enforcement on this will not be instant. I mean, in other words, if we do get a complaint, we'll go out, we can tell the person they have to mow it, they have thirty days. So there's a thirty-day period before we can do anything beyond that. So the hope, as, as in so many other things we do, is to get voluntary compliance when we bring something to someone's attention.
Counselor List.
Thank you. As I mentioned at earlier meetings, I don't think I've been into any neighborhood in this community where there haven't been foreclosed properties. And often the maintenance of those foreclosed properties is left. And I, I have two on my street, which is kind of unusual. And both of them, you know, one was maintained pretty well, the other one wasn't maintained very well. And it's, it's a big difference. And I do think that it should expand to the rest of the city. I've always had a concern about why, you know, why the downtown areas are focusing more on downtown and what about the, the general city? And I think neighbors deserve people to maintain their properties adjacent to them and, and to maintain their own as well, so, thank you.
Just a kind of question or curiosity with respect to expectations and I guess enforcement of this. Most of the complaints are driven by what's going on in the, the front property. Do we have a concern with what's going on in people's backyards as well?
Wonderful.
What Dave is suggesting is that we can write the ordinance in such a way that it's the, it, it would only cover property that could be absurd, observed from the right of way, not the back forty.
It's a suggestion, because I mean, I know that we're gonna run into some situations where someone's gonna say, what do you care that my backyard is, you know, twelve inches of weeds or something like that.
And we might also want to exclude some of the more undeveloped agricultural areas because out in those areas, you know, if I had a forty-acre lot, I wouldn't mow forty acres, you know. I'd probably have thirty-five acres or thirty-eight acres of meadow and trees.
Councilor Beam.
Yeah, I have a question and it is, is personal. So what if you have a house and you have, maybe it's a two-acre lot and what we've done is have houses backways and it's wooded in the front.
That's different.
And it's wooded on the sides. And, and it's not all trees, of course. You do have some shrubs and things. I mean, would people, especially near the driveway, let's say, or something, but it's kind of like a wooded area, is, what would happen there?
No, you're right. I mean, we're gonna have to use some discretion with this. If there's a long driveway and they just have tall weeds along it, I don't think that's, I mean, we can't argue the intent, but that's not the intent of what we're trying to do here. We're trying to, basically, it's your, I, I think the most complaints we get are from your, your traditional single-family neighborhoods, you know, suburbia type thing, where you had, just have either foreclosed laws or property owners that aren't necessarily being responsible. And right now, we really can't do anything about that. We use our ordinance when we're taking code enforcement action for other property maintenance code violations in the downtown and while we're there, we observe weeds of a certain height, great. We throw that into the NOB with, you know, trash and a broken window, and oh, by the way, you got tall weeds out here, you need to take care of it type thing.
So if you have pretty weeds that are like grasses, that would be okay?
Well, you know.
Those are the kinds of issues that you run into, because there are people who believe in naturalizing their yards with wildflowers and stuff like that. And does that constitute?
Look at me.
Does that constitute, does that constitute, is, are those weeds or are they ornamentals?
Ornamental grasses. The, for instance, over the septic, over the, that field there.
My guess is if, if I, if we can't see your front yard from the road, I'm never gonna know what's going on anyway.
I don't even know what's in your front yard.
I'm just curious, because other people, I'm sure do, I know they do the same thing in our area. Some people do. Some people just go right to the street and like, like a meticulous lawn, but a lot of people just let it be woodsy in the front and I just wondered what would happen there.
Yeah, I mean.
We might want, we, we'll take a look at it. We might want to leave some of the very low-density residential areas and agricultural areas out of the area that we cover.
Councilor Markot.
When this issue arose, rose, my concern was particularly NCB, NCA, suburban residential. I never envisioned rural agricultural or resource conservation. The reference to the backside of a house, maybe in most cases it wouldn't be an issue, but if somebody's got a pool right behind their home and you've got weeds growing around it, I've lived next to one, I got a constituent call, not from my ward, but that was the exact situation there. And that could be pretty nasty. You've got bugs, you've got odours coming from both the pool and the tall grass that's surrounding the, the unkept area. And so somehow we need to include the backside of properties in certain cases.
I had said no public comment, but it appears we only have one member of the public here today and he appears he wants to speak, so I, I guess that's not gonna keep us here too late. So sir, just name an address before you start.
My name is Scott Crocker. I'm at four fifty-two East Avenue. And I believe that Councilor Markot is talking about my complaint, because I've had a gentleman move in beside me. My back lawn is actually his side lawn, because I'm on East Avenue and he's on Marrow. And he's decided that since he's moved in, he hasn't mowed his lawn, or he's mowed it and lets it grow back. And it's ridiculous. You know, we all pay taxes in the area. I've been there thirty-six years and I've never run up against this situation. I think it's ridiculous that we've never done anything about this up until now. I was flabbergasted when I talked with Councilman Markot a few months ago and he said, there's no ordinance. I said, really? Because I'm at a loss of what to do. I have no power at all. And other neighbors have commented to me, what are we gonna do? I said, I don't know, but I figured I'd give it a shot. Councilman Markot told me about the meeting tonight and I appreciate you letting me speak. I just don't understand why anybody wouldn't mow their lawn. I mow mine once a week. He hasn't mowed it in two years and he's got a riding lawnmower. I don't get it. I don't understand. So if you folks could put any tooth into the code enforcement of this, it would be very appreciated by a whole bunch of people, I'm sure.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
I'm just gonna add, you know, it's nice to find common ground with lots of counselors on an issue and I think this is one of those, you know, it's time, it's called.
All right, so we can write something up?
We will write something up and bring it back to you folks.
November twentieth meeting, month from now?
Should be able to. That ought to give us enough time to get it in place before the next growing season.
Excellent. All right. And.
Yes.
That one week in August?
Yeah.
And now we go from weed to weed.
Weed, yes.
All right.
Okay, back to, back to a discussion about marijuana. I think, as you all know, we do have a moratorium in place that runs until January on retail medical marijuana. The new state laws will be effective in December. So there's a couple of things we need to do. Number one, we need to make sure that we have an interim plan in place for what we're going to do as that moratorium deadline comes up on us and the new state laws go into effect. And then second, we probably, and much more complicated, we need to take a look and try to decide what we wanna do moving forward as we deal with these issues. Dave, do you wanna go through your presentation and then we can start having, I can, I've got some discussion, we, through this process, we have some specific discussion points for you to consider tonight.
Okay, so with the help of Doug Green and Heidi McCarthy, we've kind of put together this PowerPoint here just to give people a rough idea of where we are and some of the things that staff in the council need to start thinking about. So July tenth, you folks acted upon the moratorium. When it became effective on the thirteenth, you folks provided a little bit of a grace period there and quite frankly, we got twelve more applications out of that, or approximately twelve more applications out of that. We're at a time now where we actually need to decide on what we're gonna do, because that moratorium does expire in January. As Ed mentioned, we have some state law deadlines that are coming up in December thirteenth and both Ed and I can get into that, but it is gonna make things complicated potentially for us. So dates to be mindful of are December thirteenth and January thirteenth. Our current rules, so again, this has nothing to do with adult-use marijuana, this is all medical marijuana. Caregiver, you can grow for two patients in any zoning district, no local license, no permitting. We don't wanna know about it. I shouldn't say we don't wanna know about it, but we don't regulate it. So if someone is growing for themselves or they are growing for, they're a caregiver for a patient, they can do that as a matter of right. In a single-family home, any district in, in Lewiston, you can't do it in a multifamily structure. So if we do, if that comes to our attention where they're doing it for a multifamily structure, there is a provision in the ordinance with respect to that. And quite frankly, that was part of the reason this ordinance was adopted, I think, back in two thousand nine, because we had concerns about people having grows downtown in tenement buildings with, you know, marginal wiring to begin with. And then we have these people with, you know, significant grows and closets and bedrooms and we have had a few, I want to say we've had two fires where it was a complete loss, you know, the structure, and we've had some minor ones as well. Registered caregivers. Each caregiver can, can grow up to, for five patients, six mature plants per patient. That's what our current provisions speak to now. That is changing come December thirteenth. On the state side, they are no longer going to regulate it by the number of patients, it will be by the number of plants instead, which is different than our ordinance and that's something that we're gonna have to speak to. But it certainly, it makes things certainly easier for caregivers out there, because originally they had to have a caregiver for each patient and they could grow up to six plants per patient. Now it's just gonna be, I'm a caregiver and I can grow up to thirty plants, which was the same difference, right, as having, you know, five patients and, and six plants. the same difference, right, as having, you know, five patients and six plants.
Is that to, sorry, I believe during the medical marijuana presentation, they talked about how they like switch out patients all the time?
Right.
So?
So right now, it's the.
Well, that's in you paperwork or just that?
Them.
Okay.
You know, yeah, theoretically, they're supposed to be limited to four patients, and then they have a fifth patient that's a revolving patient. This essentially, with the new laws that become effective in December, they'll have unlimited number of patients, basically. There are still state rules that they have to follow as far as like registering who they provide marijuana to and things like that, beyond what I understand or prepared to talk about tonight. But yes, they're gonna be able to, it will get rid of that fifth revolving patient, and essentially, they'll just allow to have as many patients as they can accommodate with thirty mature plants. Facility may include multiple growers, so currently in town, we have establishments where maybe like a five thousand square foot warehouse, and there are three growers in it. So great, you wanna have multiple growers in a location, you can do that, assuming you're in the right zoning district and you get a license from us and a use permit. So we require a use permit because it's a new use, and we require a license for, excuse me, every commercial caregiver operation in Lewiston. So you need a use permit, you need to get a license, we do the inspections of that. Retail sales allowed as a medical use, so that's been the whole new conundrum here, right? Originally, that wasn't necessarily a use that the state contemplated as far as caregivers being able to have kind of like this retail presence to distribute their marijuana to that fifth revolving patient. And over the years, that's evolved, so the state will allow you to have essentially a storefront where you can distribute your marijuana now. So that wasn't necessarily a use that we contemplated. We've talked to the city attorney, I think it was a year ago or so, and we were advised that because medical marijuana is technically for medical purposes, we should be allowing it in any zoning district that we allow medical uses. So that opened it up to many more districts here, and I'll show you the map in a second here. In testing facilities, we will allow those as a business and professional office. We may have testing facilities, just like we may have grow operations in Lewiston, that we are unaware of. I mean, it's like anything else. I mean, it's, people build decks without permits, people probably have marijuana grows without permits. But if someone wanted to come in and get a, operate a testing facility right now, we would make sure that they have a caregiver license, and they would get a use permit from us, and then we would regulate them wherever we allow business and professional offices.
I have a question with regards to number one here, before you move on to number two.
Yep.
When you said facility may include multiple growers, so if you have three growers at this facility, it's thirty times each grower?
It will be, yeah.
Yes.
Which would be ninety.
Right.
Yes.
Right now, they, it would depend on how many caregiver cards they have or how many patients they have, but come December, yep.
And the other one was when you said you can't grow in multi-units. What's the definition of multi-units with this purpose?
Three or more.
Three or more?
Yep.
So you could in a duplex?
Correct.
Okay.
Medical dispensaries and our ordinance, again, everything I'm talking about is Lewiston's ordinance, not more than one allowed, may allow certain types of manufacturing, none in Lewiston. So originally, the state was regulating where all these dispensaries could be, and they were based upon health districts and whatnot, and then they even provided some flexibility with that. Auburn has a dispensary, and that dispensary actually is growing, I think, for three or four health districts within the state type thing. So, I mean, this whole thing has continued to evolve at the state level, which has created all kinds of confusion and headaches, I think, for everybody, growers, municipalities, and whatnot.
When you say no more than one dispensary, or?
No, yeah, exactly, more than, no more than one.
Our ordinance says we can only have one.
In the city?
In the city.
Correct.
But the state also has at least temporarily a limit on the number statewide.
Okay.
And that, and state law, when this was initially adopted, that was one of the provisions that the law actually allowed municipalities to enact, to say that you, if you want, limit the number of dispensaries in your community. So at the time, that's what we presented to you folks, because it was kind of uncharted territory. Did we want one of these, or did we want all seven? The fact that it was, at the time, there couldn't have been more than seven anyway. So the likelihood of us having got one in our community was probably kind of slim, you Adult-use marijuana, different topic altogether, but throwing it on there, because you can do personal use and grows in any zoning district today. So any one of us can grow three plants as a matter of right per state law. Have at it. No commercial facilities are currently allowed, though, so anybody who's doing adult use for medical purposes, excuse me, adult use.
And keep in mind on the adult use, the three mature plants per person, if you have a Bates College group of four, that gets you up to twelve.
How do we define commercial use?
Uh, it's not for.
Excuse me?
Commercial facility.
Correct.
Yeah.
How do we define?
Sales, manufacturing, or growing.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. So can this be limited in rental properties? So if someone is renting from someone in a single home or duplex, can that be by contract law?
No. No, under state law, we can't, because it's, it's, the state law says, says you can have three plants per adult on the premises that they're, that they occupy.
But if you're the landlord?
You're the landlord, you can, the landlord can, can say no.
Oh, that, that's what I meant.
Yeah, the landlord can.
So the landlord, if it's a owner-occupied duplex, he can prohibit it. If it's a, let's say, out-of-state landlord that owns a duplex, then he can prohibit it?
Just like he doesn't allow pets or smoking or anything else.
Okay, that's what I meant.
Yes. We, we had talked some about whether we wanted to place some kind of limits, given that we didn't necessarily want, you know, twelve plants and one side of the duplex and twelve plants on another side of the duplex, but we can't do that. The city doesn't have the authority to do that. Only the property owner can do it.
So there's.
Kears are turning, sorry.
Sure.
Then why can we have it for multi-units?
That's for, that's not for personal use, that's for caregiver.
Right, okay, thank you.
So there's two maps here. Oops. So current zoning for medical dispensaries and grows. Maybe I'll just keep it this way right now. So the map on the left is all the zoning districts that we allow dispensaries as a conditional use. Again, we don't have any dispensaries, and because Auburn has the one for this health district, we really don't need to worry about it at this point. The map on the right is where we allow caregiver operations as a permitted use. And when I say caregiver, I mean, commercial operations where people are growing for two to five patients, or come December thirteenth, up to thirty plants. Four zoning districts, so all those colors there, at the end of the day, it's those four zoning districts that you see.
Is there any difference between the two zones?
Yeah.
No, there isn't, just other than conditional and permitted.
Okay, thanks.
Current zoning for retail marijuana. So what we're showing here is, what are, how many districts we got there? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven zoning districts? So this goes to the earlier comment about when we, the state started saying to dispense, I shouldn't use the word dispense, but I guess distribute medical marijuana from a storefront, and we said, "Great, you can do that wherever, wherever we permit medical uses." There's eleven zoning districts in town that allow medical uses. So any one of those zoning districts that you see on there colored, if somebody wants to open up a storefront, they come and get a license from us to get a permit. The next slide actually attempts to show where those locations are. And so what we've done here is we, you, we have a mixture of facilities in town. We have facilities that grow, we have facilities that have retail, and then we have facilities that do grow and retail. There are also a number of facilities that are currently have pending licenses and use permits. When the moratorium was enacted there, and there was that grace period, it appears that we had some people coming in just kind of like as a placeholder, because they didn't want to necessarily lose their opportunity to be able to operate going forward. We'll talk about that, because they're probably gonna lose their opportunity, not because of us, but because of state law. But as you can see, I mean, it's along our, our primary arterials where you have these locations, because that's really where our non-residential zoning districts are.
How many circles there?
Of the, I can tell you, the, on the retail stores, there are eight that are operating and five that are permitted but not operating. So it's thirteen, I think that was the number. I didn't count the, the grows.
Altogether, I mean, for care, licensed caregiver operations, there is over two dozen? Okay, so things that we need to think about, city must decide whether to opt in for both medical marijuana and adult use. The law that's provided, that was approved by the state, now actually gives communities the ability to opt in. Do we even want to allow any type of medical marijuana use in our community? Same thing for adult use. Do we want to even allow any type of adult recreational use in the community?
With two caveats, again, we cannot limit the number of caregivers. So that is a given, that that's going to continue. We can regulate the caregivers, but we can't eliminate them. And we can't do anything about personal use.
Adult, the recreational.
The recreational.
Right. So we can still have caregivers growing for themselves, we could still have a caregiver potentially growing for somebody else. We can potentially, they'll regulate them growing thirty plants, and potentially, where do we want to allow those and things of that nature? And if you're getting confused, I think that's the, the goal here.
If you really want to get confused, sit down and read the state laws.
Yeah. Current state of marijuana regulations, so as I mentioned, the, both of these rules, the state rules come into effect on the thirteenth, and so we need to.
Of December.
Of, of December, excuse me, of December. Yeah. And what was my point gonna be with that? With the adult use, the rules haven't been actually done yet. That was in, actually, another article in today's paper about how the state is actually going to extend the RFP period a little bit further, because I guess they needed some clarification. They're looking for.
They're looking for a consultant to help them write the regulations.
Exactly. So on the adult side, initially, they were saying that it probably wouldn't be until sometime in twenty nineteen, that they would actually know how to regulate any of these adult uses. And I think they still have a deadline of like April to present the actual rules that they want to come up with. If we opt in, where should marijuana be allowed? So what are our common themes and concerns, medical and adult use? If you ask staff upstairs right now, and I think Ed's on board with us, we're kind of of the opinion that we should probably regulate these things the same, even though the growers, medical providers and adult providers may feel differently about that. And I think that's been part of their testimony up in Augusta. From a simplicity perspective, we're thinking that we should probably regulate these the same. If I can sell medical marijuana in one location, why can't I sell adult-use marijuana? And if I can grow medical marijuana somewhere, why can't I grow adult-use marijuana?
That would be if we opted in.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah, I think what we've concluded is, is that in, in an actual real-world situation, once you get into retail, manufacturing, cultivation, that those more likely than not will cover, most of those operations will include both, medical and, and recreational, because you can, if you're a manufacturer, if you're a cultivator, you can also get licensed to manufacture, and you can get licensed to sell, retail, and you can also do the same, you can be a caregiver. So you could wrap all of this into a, you know, one-stop-shopping kind of a situation. You just have to have separation between the medical and the recreational within the facility.
So things that, you know, that immediately come to our attention here, you know, we have the, what you can pretty much do for each, each use, right, the medical, the different types of things that currently are allowed, recreational, adult use, the things that are currently allowed that we need to consider. And then in the middle there is these themes and concerns that just are coming to staff's attention to start off with. Odor, you know, that's how we find out about people doing residential grows is odor. We don't have an odor ordinance right now for non-residential use, uh, excuse me, for residential uses. If we do anything, I would suggest that we adopt an odor ordinance that applies to, whether it's, yeah, whether it's everything or just marijuana, but I think the chief will tell you, he gets complaints often about, you know, residential grows, and we, we can't really do much about that. Things that we, you know, we don't have to get into details tonight, but these are ideas that I think, you know, between the council and the planning board and staff, we need to start thinking about is, do we want to have a requirement that these become standalone structures? Can you have a row of these in a strip mall, or do you just say, hey, you know, one building, one grow operation, or one, one retail operation? What are the concerns of, you know, the public and the council with respect to like the density of these establishments in the location? Separation from schools and parks. There's language, I think, medical is five hundred recreation, or I should say, adult use is a thousand, but the state allows you to reduce that down to five hundred.
And you can, or you can expand it to farther.
That's right.
So, so can't be closer than five hundred feet to a school, but there's no upper limit to how far you can push the, be away from.
So we could put Auburn, you know, for one of the, okay. Zoning districts, we gotta decide which zoning districts we want to put these in. Again, I think, in some respects, I think the four zoning districts that we allow to grow operations in now are probably the appropriate locations to do that. But we might want to have some additional performance standards like odor, like separation, things like that, just in the, in the event that we think there are some concerns. Licensing fees, we currently license now, and I meant to look that up, but I want to say it's five hundred and some odd dollars.
Five fifty.
Five fifty, thank you from the rear. So, and that has not been an issue as far as collecting that money. And we have a fair amount of time into these places, doing inspections, because it's police code, electrical, fire, everybody's doing an inspection of this facility, so. Food establishments is a moving target, everybody wants to make edibles. Depending on who you talk to, the state, I'm not sure how they're regulating these either as far as Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Ag, putting the substance into your food versus just a place that produces it. For what it's worth, right now, we do have people producing edibles, and we treat that as accessory to their grow operations. So if we have a caregiver that is actually growing right now, and then in the back room, they're making lollipops and cookies and all that type of stuff, we treat that as accessory to their use. They do need to get a special food handlers license from us, and they need a license from the Department of Ag. There is definitely a learning curve there with a number of these facilities and food code requirements. I mean, we have enough challenges with regular restaurants, never mind people who are trying to make edibles. So there's definitely a steep learning curve there. Enclosed facilities, I think that's, along with odor, I think that's something absolutely you folks in the board, Planning Board, want to talk about. It sounds like we have the ability to potentially require grows to be inside.
Yes. It's, it looks like we could require all grows to be inside.
Which?
As opposed to people growing outside.
You mean, commercial uses?
All.
Potentially.
Yeah, personal.
Which, I mean, obviously, we'd need to discuss that, but that certainly helps in some respects with security. I mean, one of the requirements is security, both from a local perspective and a state perspective. That's why we get the police department involved, because they check to make sure that they actually have a real security system in place. I can tell you, we've had grows before where they just have a camera hanging on the wall, and it does absolutely nothing, and the police department's denied their license because they're not putting in a real security system. Enclosed might help us with that, enclosed might help with some of the odor complaints as well. Background checks, the chief can speak to that more, but there's probably a need for us to revisit the background checks and the criteria that we have for that, to potentially beef that up, to keep the wrong people from potentially selling marijuana or distributing it in the community. Again, retail, you guys need to help us out as far as are we gonna limit retail to certain areas? I know some people have had concerns about potential retail presence on Lisbon Street downtown. Is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? And I kind of already talked about the edibles. So recommendations, because Ed tells me you guys always need a recommendation. So I think the first thing we need to do is amend the existing medical marijuana ordinance to provide the city to the ability to determine if and how caregiver retail stores, registered dispensaries, testing facilities, manufacturing facilities should be regulated.
This is provided we actually opt in.
Well, to some extent.
So if we don't opt in.
To some extent, yes. In fact, I've, since we put this together, I've given this some more thought, and I can, I've got a little bit more detailed step-by-step process now. The first step we, I think we need to take is to review and revise our existing caregiver regulations, because they are going to continue. We are going to have caregiver regulations whether we want them or not. So I think that would be the first part of our ordinance. In some ways, rather than try to deal with this whole thing as a big, huge, gooey mass, I think it might make sense to take it in chunks, and that would be the first thing that I would suggest. Then the second thing that. Then the second thing that we should at least think about in the near term is whether we want to adopt any limitations on cultivation for personal use, performance standards. Do we want to think about requiring grows to be indoors or to be separated, personal grows are to be separated so far from neighbors, those kinds of things because of the odor issue? And we have the ability to do some regulation there. We know we're gonna have it, we know we already have it, so I think it might be appropriate for us to deal with that. Testing facilities, I think, is a pretty easy one, because they have to be independent. They can't be tied in with growing cultivation operations or retail sales, because they are obviously testing the product as an independent, kind of an independent testing lab. And then the last area that's gonna be the most difficult is trying to deal with regulating the stores cultivating facilities and manufacturing facilities for medical and recreational use. That's probably gonna be the most complicated area because of the nature of those operations, the size, potential size, and things like that. But those are the four going-forward steps. On an immediate basis, one of the things that was included in your packet was a suggested interim amendment to the city's existing ordinance. And primarily what that does is it eliminates all references to dispensaries, because I don't want something on the books saying we will allow a dispensary when we really won't. Because even though it's on our books as of December fourteenth, it wouldn't be allowed because we haven't acted yet after the new state law goes into effect. So I want to just avoid confusion and get rid of that. And there's a few other minor changes that are made in this as well. But this would in effect take the place of the moratorium. If we amended this, we wouldn't have to extend the moratorium, because we would not be allowing, we had not, we will not have taken action on retail medical shops. The other thing that people should be aware of, and David mentioned this, as I mentioned, we have eight retail medical shops with five permitted but not operating. Under state law, as of December thirteenth, the only marijuana operations that will be grandfathered are those that are operating. So if you have a license, but you're not operating on the thirteenth, you can't start until such time as the council takes some action. So that is something we think we need to make those folks who have, who have permits but haven't done anything with them aware of, because some of them are in process.
Yeah, it's a big deal. I mean, we have some people out there that spend thousands of dollars in anticipating that they're gonna open because they scramble to get a use permit and a license, but they're not there yet.
So if we don't opt in, these are the only eight that we will have?
Whichever ones are operating on the date the law goes into effect, those will be the only ones.
And as far as facilities regulation, if we do not opt in, is that a big deal? Or do we still have to do something with that?
As far as...
You had said step four was regulate the facilities.
If we don't opt in, we don't have to do anything.
But we would still have to do it with the revise the caregiver...
You'd have to revise...
Adopt the limits for personal use and the testing facilities.
Only if we want to allow testing facilities. It's the easiest...
That could be part of the opt-in as well.
That would be, that would be part of the opt-in as well.
Save a lot of time. Okay. Before we turn it over to the council...
I will also let everybody know that Chief O'Malley has been formally designated by me as the naysayer, and the person to speak against the whole issue.
And I was just gonna turn it right over to the chief to come up, and please don't hold anything back.
As you normally do.
Yeah. Because you're known for that.
I think, maybe all of you maybe haven't had a chance to read that article I sent to you. It's called, entitled, "It's High Time We Took A Breath For Marijuana Commercialization." It's written by the US Attorney from Colorado. It's got some good points in here. I think one of the major things as you look at is the marijuana rate is eighty-five percent higher than the national average for the youth. We receive many calls from the police department about odor. We also receive many calls about people overdosing on the edibles. I don't know if everybody's really that familiar with it, but people who don't know the potency of an edible, if it's a cookie, or a brownie, or a gummy bears, whatever, they're eating too much, they're overdosing, getting violently ill and calling the police. And so the police show up, you know, the ambulance has to show up. So it's calls for service that are increasing for us. I don't know if any of you have ever been into any of these medical marijuana grow places. I mean, I thought it would be important for me to go into some of them, just to see what they were like and kind of have them explain it to me. I think some of you have seen on Lisbon Street, legal pieces, they have a gentleman that dresses up in a blunt costume and dances up and down, so that's one of the first things you see as you come into Lewiston. I walked into that establishment, and I could smell burning marijuana. People were slamming doors and closing them, and I tried to speak to the owner, he wasn't there at the time, and I talked to one of the employees, and he really couldn't explain to me what was going on. I then walked into, right here next, on Middle Street, next to Guthrie's, just opened up. You walk into the place, it looks like an upscale art gallery. I could smell marijuana, but I couldn't smell burning marijuana. I did speak to the owner and one of the employees, and I pointed out about the odor and the smell and suggested, you know, they can spend the money. They can get charcoal filters so you don't smell this. I went up to Crystal Spring Healing, up on Main Street and Marketplace Mall. You walk in there, it's like you're walking into a doctor's office. They showed me around everything. They opened up doors, they showed me everything, how they package it, you know, where their edibles were. I couldn't smell anything, and I was standing right next to it. So I think, you know, if we don't opt in, we have some places, but I still think we need to regulate them in terms of how we proceed with this. I agree with the mayor, I think not opting in, I think, is the way we go. We have enough. And I talked to some of these business owners, and I told them how we got thirty-five applications, you know, over that two- or three-day period we had this summer. And I said, realistically, in your mind, how many places do you think can operate? And they said, four to six. They're very supportive of the retail part of it. I think that's why a lot of them are spending the money to have the medical. I'm all for the medical. I was here at the city council meeting, and we had several people get up and speak about the benefits of medical marijuana. There was a gentleman who was the Iraqi war veteran, and he talked about injuries he sustained, and that was a very compelling speech that he gave in terms of opening up his medical marijuana. But I think we need to think as a city, is what do we want to be known as? And are we going to actually have storefront after storefront after storefront of the recreational marijuana? And I personally think it's gonna increase our calls for service. You read this article, you're gonna hear about the black market is exploding in Colorado, the cost of dealing with impaired drivers, we're just starting to see that. What we have to do with the police department, we have what's called DRE, Drug Recognition Experts. It's a huge process. It takes about two hours to have somebody go through that testing process, but it probably takes me about two months to get somebody trained in that. That's an expense. We actually sent two offices to Baltimore, Maryland, where they went into one of the jails down there, so they could practice on the impaired people that they had bringing in, because there were so many people that were coming into the jail system. I think we probably need to get some of the folks from these medical marijuana businesses here to speak to you folks. I spoke to them about the regulations we have now in terms of felons being allowed to have licenses. The ones that weren't smoking marijuana in their businesses were agreeing with me that they don't think we should have felons be involved regardless of if it's ten years or less. Right now, that's what it is. So if you have a drug trafficking conviction that's ten, fifteen years ago, you can get a license here. And they were, they want to, you know, present a professional appearance in terms of their places. You know, when I walked into Crystal Spring, I was very impressed when I walked in. You couldn't tell that this was, you know, marijuana and edibles, and people were coming in, and they were basically like picking up a prescription at the pharmacy. So I really don't have a problem with the medical. I know Ed feels, and I do agree with him, that if we're gonna have medical, you're gonna have the recreational. But I agree with the mayor, where I think we don't opt in, we have certain numbers, and how many do we need here in the city, Lewiston? I think you, as a city council, need to consider that, is, okay, we can grandfather the people that are here, let's work with the people here, make them be responsible in terms of the businesses that they're running. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for the chief, while he's still standing there?
Thanks for sharing that article, Brian.
All right. You're free.
All right.
All right. Are you guys ready for us?
Yes.
All right. So, chief alluded to, I'm a big no on opting in for either. I think it plays directly to our image. There's no economic benefit for us, but I definitely think we should go to work on the caregiver regulations and the personal regulations. And happy to look at those when you have them. But I'm a big no on opting in, so. Anyone else?
Do you want to, does everyone have something they want to say?
I can just start. Let's go one through seven.
I would like you to characterize the difference between what's grandfathered and what's opting in. What would that?
The only thing, the only thing that's grandfathered would be the medical retail. As I said before, we can't limit the number of caregivers and caregiver operations, so I...
Well, no, I would be, I think I would suggest that...
Look at Dave, because I need to clarify that.
I think if you're talking about grandfathered in like the existing establishments, everyone will be grandfathered.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is...
Opt-in opens it up for anybody else who wants to...
That's correct. So if we opt in, then we have to decide what uses do we actually want to opt in? We can decide which ones, with the exception of the individual caregiver. Any one of us can be an individual caregiver. That's not, that's not for debate or discussion. Opting in is, do you want to allow retail? Do you want to allow testing? Do you want to allow manufacturing?
But we do already.
We do already, because...
And that's what's grandfathered.
Correct.
Could be grandfathered.
Anything, anything that is currently operating can continue.
So all those little circles on the map there, assuming everyone is operating by the thirteenth, or, and actually, it could be as soon as the twentieth, but for these purposes, the thirtieth, the thirteenth of December, they will all be grandfathered, be legally non-conforming, they can continue it all.
Even though, because we don't opt in. But what allowed them to create those?
Our existing ordinance.
It was a combination of our existing ordinance and the lack of clarity on the part of the state. No one anticipated retail medical. You can make a rather convoluted, probably unsuccessful argument, that since the state now specifically recognizes it in a new law, that it wasn't authorized before now. But the reality is that the state allowed it to happen, so we're kind of stuck with it.
Council Peck, you have?
I'm not for any of this. I know it's not on the table, so I'm gonna go for not opting in. One, one thing to add to what the chief said about the uptick of youth use is the amount of parents that are going into schools high to pick up their kids and then leaving with their kids. Something to throw out there for everybody.
Council Rick?
Thank you so much. Oh, dear. I had a lot of questions. So, in terms of enclosed facilities, is there a way to include ventilation as a part of the structure?
We could have performance standards that would require both certain outcomes, such as odor control, plus specify some of the mechanisms.
Right. There's some ordinances out there. Heidi did some research, where, I mean, they should actually speak into the type of filtration systems that would be expected in there. I don't know that we need to go into that level of detail. I mean, we've had guys using bathroom fan vents, you know, that's obviously not gonna work. So, but I would suggest that it's basically, it's not detectable, whether it's not detectable at the building, or maybe not at the property line, that, because that's where we get the complaint, right? If I can smell beyond the property, that's, that's why we're there then.
Okay, so that could possibly be rolled into that part of the ordinance or whatever. The other part that people, folks seem to have a bit concern with is the, like, visual of the storefront or the, and I don't know if that's something that...
Well, yes, that, actually, we do have some authority to regulate signage. We can prohibit signage from, if, from a certain distance from a school. There is types of advertising that the state law doesn't permit. I suspect that the guy in the blunt outfit jumping up and down would not be permitted under the new state law, because that could be interpreted as marketing to younger folks.
It's a temporary sign.
It's a temporary sign, too.
Yeah.
It's a temporary movable sign.
That's right.
I'm sure he's spinning one.
The public health committee actually asked about that, and was told that there was nothing legally that could be done about...
That's under the old...
Okay.
But under the new law, that specifically authorizes us to, us to have some control over signage, and specifically outlaws misleading signs, signs that are, signs or advertising that can be arguably promoting youth use, those kinds of things. So there is more room there for us to deal with it.
Okay, so I think that's really critical for folks to think about, too, as we're considering this. I'm definitely into a separation from the schools, and I've asked the school committee members to let me know what they think is appropriate for that. I haven't heard anything back yet, but I will continue asking. In my mind, I think it's really critical, though, that we separate medical and adult use. Marijuana is such a unique topic in that it serves a medical purpose, and as we saw when caregivers were here, it's really important as some folks' medical plans, but adult use, you know, has a very different connotation, and so, yeah, hearing you folks say that you would want to equocate the two was definitely interesting.
Well, let me clarify, the reason I was saying that is if we allowed both...
Okay.
That effectively, in the real world, the operations would be so, so much the same that we should take the same approach to either.
Okay. I started writing a note, but then I got distracted. I, yeah, I feel like it's something we shouldn't just shut down right away. I think marijuana is this big bad in a lot of people's minds, but if we can limit how intrusive it is, definitely look at what zones it could be permitted in, and then also be very clear about odor and appearance of grow operations and retail, I think there is ways that we could do it where we don't become the city that is overtly and obnoxiously participating in this. I'll leave it there for now.
Council Joy?
I'm not sure about signing on or not. Right now, I'd say no. My concerns, and this came up when I was in the legislature on the Criminal Justice Committee, and the difficulty for law enforcement to monitor and/or test individuals where it was quite a discussion at the time, and quite a concern, and I just heard Chief O'Malley state that they had to have individuals come in from out of state, you know, to do different trainings. Anyways, that's one of the things that I have. The other thing was the separation from schools. Do you have any idea as to what that separation would be, or that hasn't been figured out yet?
Well, it, they have to be a minimum of five hundred feet from the school, and it can be as far as we want to place it. So we could say a thousand, fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred, Auburn. I mean, effectively, you could do that.
Right. The, one of the other questions is, is you mentioned that we had eight, eight licensed distributors now?
That are operating.
That are operating, and five on...
Five that have permits but have not opened.
Any of those close to schools?
Yes.
And if they are, that would mean...
Does that grandfather two?
Right, yeah. So we have, yeah, we have some that are, I mean, they all meet the requirements of being five hundred feet or further away.
I guess that was my question.
Right, yeah. That's a current, that's a current state provision right now, so you can't have a caregiver operation closer than five hundred feet.
My, my other one that's a little difficult for me is the separation in the neighborhoods. So how, how would we go about that? Let's say the neighborhood across my street, which has three streets on it, so it's got probably eighty homes, lots are about a hundred by a hundred. so it's got probably 80 homes, lots are about 100 by 100. So I guess it would be difficult to set some type of parameter where...
Well, the, one of the options would be to require all grows to be indoors, so that if somebody in a residential neighborhood of a certain density wanted to have marijuana for their own use, they would have to grow it inside, they couldn't grow it in the backyard. You could also take a look at, I mean, you could, you could require that across the board, you could require that based on the zoning district, so when you get into, you know, more rural zones or... What did we, what did we decide with chickens, 20,000 square feet? You know, so there are ways that you could either require it all to be indoors, which would minimize odor problems theoretically, or you could require or allow it, or if you allowed it outdoors, you could put distance requirements to neighboring properties.
I think one of the, if you were, when we were making that comment, just to be clear, we were thinking about the non-residential businesses and potentially having separation from those. So not necessarily in a residential neighborhood, because we can't necessarily...
Private growers?
Same thing, I mean, if it's a residential neighborhood, private road, and every house in your subdivision wants to have primary care, you know, they're growing for themselves, or they're growing for one other person.
Right.
Have at it, you know, as long as we don't, you know, the concern is, we don't want to be, smell it. You don't want to smell it as a neighbor. You don't want to have a bunch of traffic going in and out of there, because all of a sudden, they're distributing all this marijuana because of that.
It's kind of hard with homes being 100 feet apart not to smell it.
That would be correct.
The other, the other thing I guess I had is that after the growth process in, on the interior, I understand that some individuals will take them out and put them outside to dry or cure or whatever it is, and then they take them apart.
I think we can, we can regulate all of that, even for, you know, personal use growers.
Just...
The, the one other thing I would throw out there for you all to keep in mind is that whether you're for this or not, we are still going to be dealing with the fallout of it.
Right.
So if we don't allow rows and recreational sales in Lewiston, other people in the area will. You know, we don't allow fireworks to be sold in Lewiston. Never know that on the Fourth of July. So if we don't allow recreational marijuana to be sold in Lewiston, the people who want recreational marijuana will find it.
Thank you.
So I'm going to be real honest, I, this like confounds me in a way, that like very few issues that come before us do. So first, sort of, I guess, just a bunch of sort of basic questions. Does the planning board play any role in any of this at some point?
Certainly in terms of, there will be two elements that have to be done. One is certainly an ordinance, but then we'll also have zoning changes that will have to be implemented as well, zoning regulations.
So are they getting the same kind of workshop presentation that we're getting, or they haven't yet?
They haven't yet, but at some point, they obviously will.
Okay, and then the December 13th deadline, are we able to opt in after that? So I don't feel like, as of right now, that I could make a decision to opt in on either of these things, either way by December 13th, given our...
No, no, you don't have, in fact, if you made a decision between now and December 13th, it wouldn't count.
Okay, but, but, okay, so after, we can continue to have this conversation beyond December 13th?
Yes. The one thing that I do want to do is to have some of the ordinance modifications in place, preferably sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Just to clarify that we're not allowing dispensaries and make it clear we haven't, I don't, I don't want to let anything sneak in through the back door when we're not watching.
The language you folks are going to want to, I think, focus on is the last page of the ordinance, 2211, that very last underlined section there, that's talking about opting in and the facilities, and that, that's kind of, that's like the meat of this whole thing here as far as what's, what, what needs to happen, really. And to your point, that doesn't prohibit you from doing something later on.
Okay.
It just, it gives us the, it puts the brakes on things, quite frankly, so we know what we're doing. Because we don't right now.
Yes, so I, I just came back from a work trip to Portland, Oregon, where it's, and they have no idea what's going on either, so I think that's a pretty common theme. I agree with Councilor Ray that sort of really keeping medical, the medical side and the adult use side defined is really important for me. You know, like I said, this is like overwhelming, and so a real basic sort of breakdown, I think of each of those things would be helpful. And as we decide to opt in to either of those or both of those, pros and cons for that opt-in, you know, one thing we haven't talked about, well, Mayor Bouchard made reference to it, is that there's no fiscal benefit for us in this, that, you know, we're not getting any kind of revenue sharing from the state in terms of taxes, but we are being asked to implement all of the regulations and enforcement behind this, and so in the end, this could actually end up costing us money as opposed to making us money. I think that that's important for us to take into consideration as we have this larger conversation. Corey Brown, who works for Healthy Andra Skoggan, is helping Auburn figure out their sort of decision on this, and so it might be helpful for her to either maybe come in and present to us or to maybe, for staff to maybe have a conversation with her. She works in their substance use and misuse stuff, so I think she has a pretty good knowledge, and she's very sort of black and white about it. And I mean, I don't know, maybe, I don't know how others on the council are feeling, but, you know, for me, like a series of conversations about this would be helpful, but maybe that's just something that I need to set up with staff personally, if others aren't feeling like they need to have that.
Well, that's one of the, one of the reasons why I kind of suggested taking these step by step, rather than trying to come in with this huge ordinance that covers the universe.
And I would say, you know, maybe a workshop on each of those steps before, okay, thank you.
I agree. I am really more comfortable with going slow and not opting in right away and not, and going slow enough so that we all feel comfortable with what we decide to do and what the, was going to happen because of it, because there's so many ramifications. I just would like to, to go nice and slow and really understand the issues around the... I, I am confused, and I'd like to really understand what's going on before, before we opt in to all kinds of things. So I agree with most people, I guess.
I'm sure, no surprise to anyone here, but I have no interest in opting in on anything. I'd be looking at the most restrictive ordinances where we have to allow. And a couple of anecdotes, kind of piggybacking what I heard when I said tonight about parents picking up their kids under the influence of weed. I know that there are instances out there where there are parents endorsing and providing to their 14-year-olds, so we see that, and with respect to Lisbon Street, there was a couple of days just driving with your window open, you could smell it coming right across Lisbon Street from the establishment. I have no interest in turning Lewiston into what this could end up looking like.
Councilor Pecking?
Just a, I was looking at it afterwards. The definition of school in here talks about private pre-K, or private and public preschool, elementary, middle, and high school. It doesn't necessarily address child cares in there at all. And then we also may want to look to at other places that children are. Our rec department probably falls under this because it's so close to the middle school, but the other thing that comes to mind is the library as well, making sure that they're not near that. And then more of an educational piece to Councilor Markot's point. We have parents, none that I've ever encountered, that like to try to put this into breast milk, so it's not, it's not as old as 14, it can go a lot younger. So just, just for some food for thought for that, it can get that crazy.
What page was that on?
Which one?
The schools.
Second. Can I also point out, too, since this is our code?
Let's be clear, who pointed that out?
Yeah, it's the Councilor Ray. Who, who missed this being Section 22, 420?
Isn't that great? I blame the clerks, I think the clerks did it.
Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, I'm a little taken back about one of your suggestions on people who are growing for their own personal use would have to do it inside. I mean, this, you know, people grow things like this outside. Now, I could see some, some performance criteria, lot size or whatever, which is a problem, but I don't know if the growing is where the smell comes from, to me, the processing. And frankly, I hit, I hit the Marden Mall in Lewiston, and I know something's going on, because the smell, and this, that's an enclosed facility, because you don't see anything, and you don't, there's no retail or whatever, but I do think that, you know, forcing somebody who's growing three plants for themselves to do it inside and do it with electric lights and whatever that you have to do, rather than just growing outside.
No, and that's, is valid, but remember, it, it's, there's no guarantee it's only three. Easily be six, 12, etc., depending on the number of adults living in the house.
That option, as long as there's performance standards included on it, that, you know, you don't want them growing next to somebody's house, but there is lots of places that this can be done.
And I think there, there is a smell from the growing stuff, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's various stages during the process that can be odors.
Process of process?
Of a grow operation, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I mean, obviously, the little seedlings and everything don't produce an odor, but when the plants are budding and whatnot, there's odors when they're taking the buds and whatnots.
Because we do get complaints now, right, about outdoor grows?
We had one outdoor grow that we are aware of, that we did get complaints about since no longer growing outside, but yeah, we did have some complaints.
I think something we all need to be cognitive of, too, is the people of Lewiston did get to weigh in on recreational marijuana when it was being legalized, and the city did vote no. So that's something we should all be considering, that our constituents have already told us no at one point.
That was on adult use?
Yes, on legalizing recreational, so we keep that in mind as we represent the people of this city. So with that, you have a motion, Councilor Lewis?
I do indeed.
Thank you.
Motion, thank you, guys. Move to executive session to discuss acquisition of property which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining of the city.
Call the favor. Excellent.